...the fact that we're in this room instead of council chambers because I want to view this more as a conversation with people in the community about this issue instead of having perhaps what could be described as the sterile environment of council chambers. So I thought having a more intimate conversation today would be a good one as we move forward in addressing this issue. Before we begin with our speakers that we have lined up, we do have, there's Councilmember Michael Stenziano, give him a chance to speak momentarily. We do have speaker slips. There's these blue slips, they're right back here. Feel free to fill them out before the, or fill them out before the conclusion of the hearing and we would be happy to hear any testimony, questions, comments that anyone has on this issue. We already have four signed up and we take them in the order that they are received. Before we begin, Councilmember Stenziano, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Council President Klein, just welcome. Appreciate the opportunity for having this ongoing discussion. The information provided is very appreciated and look forward to continuing to work together with all communities throughout the city. Thank you, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think we're going to begin with Joe Moss, the legal counsel for the Ohio Hispanic Coalition, and I'm going to ask Mr. Moss to, who was, the Ohio Hispanic Coalition, Mr. Moss specifically was part of our stakeholder group in learning more about this issue, diving into it, and would like to know your impressions and what your takeaways were, Mr. Moss, and then any comments or testimony that you have.
I do, President Klein, thank you so very much. And Councilman Stenziano, really appreciate this opportunity to come before members of council and in a way kind of repeat some of the comments that I had made in previous forums regarding this very important topic. And I will go into why perhaps it's so important. First of all, my name is Joseph Moss, I'm an attorney in private practice, however, for the past 21 years I have served as chairman, board member emeritus, as well as general counsel for the Ohio Hispanic Coalition. It's one of the variety of organizations that I've volunteered time to and I was very proud to be associated with that important organization. The current chairman of the Ohio Hispanic Coalition, Kenny Ramos, is also in the room and I appreciate his presence and support. Prior to that, I was executive director of the Ohio Commission on Hispanic-Latino Affairs as a state-level agency representing the Hispanic community. If I may suggest that I'd like to, one thing that I didn't do in previous meetings is I'd like to kind of bifurcate my testimony because I'd like to have a standalone focus on the issue of the predicate. Why is it that the federal government, why is it that we in Columbus are even addressing this? And that's something that is sometimes missing. But first of all, the strategies for enforcement of immigration laws and actually the persecution of vulnerable communities, council has seen that many cities in recent weeks have adopted or embraced the designation of sanctuary city. This includes San Francisco, Boulder, Colorado, and by executive order Cincinnati, and famously Boston where the mayor of Boston said that his own personal office would become a sanctuary of space if that were so required. Now, other cities like Los Angeles, for example, avoid the designation and strive instead to protect the community through selective cooperation with immigration authorities. The designation is often made, as in the case of Boston, as a visible decision to oppose, and let's use the word that is being used, was just resist, the unjust and illogical centerpiece of the president's agenda, which is the persecution of ethnic communities seen by some of his supporters as representing quote-unquote "the other," those who are different from them. Now, what is the strategy for doing this? First of all, identifying the enemy among us. This is simple. Demonize and marginalize the target community, calling them illegals, rapists, murderers, and drug dealers, thereby establishing a justification, a predicate, for special targeting and expenditure of what has been identified as extraordinary resources. Now, let me share with council that research dating back more than a century documents a pattern whereby the foreign-born are involved in crime at significantly lower rates than their native-born peers. Usually the figure that is thrown around is about half. There are some researchers that have written on this topic, Bianca Bersani and Alex Piquero, sociologist at the University of Massachusetts, Boston, and a criminologist, that is Mr. Piquero, a criminologist at University of Texas. Now, there is also, the strategy also includes the creation of a legal justification for local law enforcement, and that is the establishment of what I refer to as the new Jim Crow laws. As far back as 1996, there was a nationwide effort to take away driver's licenses, and then in the state of Ohio, car registrations from people who could not prove their permanent status in the country. Also, notwithstanding, United Nations criticism on this designation of the subject, decriminalization of the mere entry into the country without inspection as a fourth-level federal misdemeanor. New targeting guidelines introduced by General Kelly, the head of the Department of Homeland Security, also include the targeting of people, and please pay attention to the specific designation, those in the room, people convicted of crimes, including minor traffic violations, as well as people accused of crimes, and this is verbatim, I'm just quoting General Kelly, or people that may have committed a crime. Since crossing the border is a misdemeanor under federal law, then clearly everybody in this class is a target, all 11 million of them. Strategy also includes the connection of local law enforcement with politicized immigration efforts, that is requiring the delivery of people detained for any traffic offense, even those classified by some jurisdictions such as the state of Michigan, for example, as a civil offense, driving without a license, speeding, and things of that nature. Now, to the declaration of a city as a sanctuary city, I would suggest to the members of council present that the actual challenge is to separate what now I'm going to start calling "civil" traffic offenses and minor misdemeanor violations from serious crimes. Data gathered over the years in Franklin County suggests that 96% of the folks from the immigrant community coming into contact with law enforcement authorities do so because of low-level traffic violations. And this is not what people are thinking of when they think of crimes. I will share with council that in according, and I'm going to say that to some degree I was surprised, according to the conversations that we have had previous to this morning, it seems like the immigrant community leadership is far more concerned with the protection of families than with the claiming of a political victory by the declaration of a sanctuary After at least two forums with the interested parties, the consensus appeared to be that what we want to do is protect the families. Otherwise, we might invite special over-enforcement by the Department of Justice and the Department of Homeland Security, and this is something that I think President Klein is aware of and has mentioned in previous meetings. Now, let me be clear, in my opinion, enforcement strategies by those federal agencies have already crossed the line into the realm of state-sponsored terrorism. State-sponsored terrorism definition is the calculated use of violence or threat of violence by a government against civilians in order to attain goals that are political or religious or ideological in nature. This is done through intimidation or coercion or instilling fear, close quotes. The goal should be instead, according to most organizations in the community, is to interrupt the synapse, the connection between the enforcement of civil traffic codes and immigration roundups. I respect the work of the Columbus Police Department and other local law enforcement authorities and accept the fact that state and local laws and ordinances have blocked the issuance of driver's licenses to many of our immigrant neighbors and anticipate that they will continue to be cited for those offenses. There's nothing, in my opinion, that we can do about that. But it is unnecessary for the protection of the greater community to arrest and incarcerate those people for failing to do something that you have prohibited them from doing in the first place, and that is the definition of a Jim Crow law. The contact with immigration authorities is often done through the jail, and that is something that Columbus is not directly responsible for, but obviously our substantial-sized CPD is responsible for delivering people under, that they have contact with. Now, let me take a few moments to address the topic of the predicate. I think that this is something that, for whatever reason, has, people have not focused on. There's been very poor coverage in the dialogue regarding sanctuary and immigrant communities, and why is it that we're looking at this in the first place? However, in the collateral issue of the travel ban, and I predicted in front of the law school at Ohio State a few weeks ago, they are very much looking at the predicate. What is it that candidate Donald Trump has said, and what is it that President Donald Trump has said, on his website and otherwise, that it is a Muslim ban? You're looking at what is the reason for doing this? And most of the argument is going along those lines, and I would invite council to consider looking at this thing, and I hope to provide you with some information that would assist you to that end. The identification of immigrants as illegals, criminals, or radically religious, radical Islam, referring to the community as rapists, murderers, and drug dealers, advocates of Sharia law, or advocates of no-go zones, this is, again, one of those falsehoods that are oftentimes advanced regarding immigrant community. Because if you accept these definitions without criticism, without pushback, you have allowed the forces of intolerance and divisiveness to go too far. And that has to be addressed. There has been an identification a week and a half ago by the President of the United States as to undocumented immigrants as vipers and snakes. There has been an insistence over the past three weeks by the Attorney General of the United States, Jeff Sessions, and by the Department of Homeland Security, that targeted individuals are the worst of the worst criminals. And with all due respect, Attorney General Sessions, you're lying to the American people. Picking up parents for, when they're retrieving their children from school, or arresting people when they go check in, as they are supposed to do when having been released by immigration or council enforcement, at their own officers, at their own offices, is not arresting and deporting the worst of the worst. No human being is illegal for being either tired or poor, or for yearning to breathe free. Data declares that immigrant communities, as I mentioned before, are one-half as likely to break the law as native-born communities, and I want to remind council, I think council is aware of this, because council is very proud of this, that one out of 10 Franklin County residents were born outside the United States. I think we're number two in the country behind Atlanta in that, in that number. What a welcoming city. That may, and in addition to that, one out of six are either first or second-generation immigrants. That may explain the relatively low crime rates in those communities in the Columbus metro area. The goal should be instead, in conclusion, to be to protect families, remembering that almost, at least with respect to the clients that I see, almost 100% of the families are hybrid families with one or two or more American-born children to foreign-born heads of family. So that if the heads of families are deported, what you're doing then is making those families more vulnerable or potentially dependent. So the focus should be on what is going to be, what's going to happen to the family in the event that mom, or dad, or both are deported. So with that, let me thank you for this opportunity, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the members of council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Moss, and I appreciate your bifurcation on the issues. And it's certainly, on the one hand, determining whether the city should, from a marketing and branding standpoint, adopt a sanctuary city status, I think is, can be similar but yet different than the focus from a policy perspective on how we can make sure families are safe, families are welcomed, because I think we are sitting around this table because of our appreciation and respect for the immigrant refugee community in the city of Columbus and how much we value them and want them to feel, and their families to feel, and their children to feel, like they are part of our community because they are. I want to give council, I have a couple of questions for you, but I want to give Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, who joined us, the opportunity to speak, necessarily about what Mr. Moss says, but we've had some opening comments, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was like, do I have to talk into this?
Yes.
I do, okay. I'm sorry, I was running behind. And I do have a question, but I'll, I'll start by saying, thank you to everyone for being here, and thank you to Mr. Moss for that excellent testimony. This is an absolutely critical issue to our city in terms of, and I say this frequently, so I apologize if I'm repeating myself to anyone, but this issue is a moral issue for us in terms of demonstrating what we care about, who we stand for, families, and really what we characterize ourselves as, as a city. And that's important to remember. But beyond being a moral issue, it is an economic issue for the city of Columbus as well. As you noted, Mr. Moss, one in 10 of our residents is born outside of the United States, and we enjoy a healthy economy in the city in part because of the contribution that our immigrant and refugee communities provide, in huge part because of that. They spend $1.6 billion in our economy each year and pay $258 million a year in state and local income taxes. So this is a question of who we are values-wise and what we are as a high-producing and welcoming economy. But the other thing that I, that I want to note, or I guess ask you, Mr. Moss, onto the specifics of your testimony are, some of the work I am so grateful to the Ohio Hispanic Coalition for doing is domestic violence counseling for women who are victims of domestic violence. And I've learned so much from your team about what those interactions are like when you, when you're out there talking to women in the community who have been a victim of violence. And so what I want to ask you is how, as a city, we can send better signals of support? Because branding and messaging ourselves as a welcoming community is important for those women in those scenarios to have the confidence to call the police, to report the crime that's been committed against them. And then we must also have the resources in place to help get them help for things like UVs and more. So I guess my question to you is what more do you think the city can do to help specifically those women?
Indeed, and let me tell you that there have been really marked improvement over the years. We really started seeing the flow of immigrants in this last wave, beginning in about 1995. So now we're talking about 22 years, which is the reason that the children of perhaps some of those early families are, you know, were born here and now are adults and contributing members of the Columbus community. In those early days, there seemed to have been some obsession, perhaps justified by surprise of the Department of Law Enforcement as to the immigration status of individuals, victims of crime. Over the years, over the past 22 years, I have noted a marked improvement in that, perhaps evidenced by the fact that the coalition can now sustain a program with the cooperation of CPD and council and the Attorney General's Office, where we don't get a lot of reports of emphasis in that area. Now, what can, what remains a problem, realistically speaking, is that if, and primarily the victims are women, if a woman reports that she is the victim of domestic violence, or she and her children, are, the likelihood that the domestic partner, usually male, is going to then have immigration consequences is relatively high. And so a decision has to be made by that individual as to whether the disruption of the family unit is an appropriate price to pay. Now, we have been aided, particularly during President Obama's administration, in an emphasis of allowing these victims to apply for adjustment of status as a consequence of being victims of crime. And I personally have two clients, although I do not do that type of paperwork, have two clients who successfully were able to be granted. So I think that the cities, it would help if the city would be able to provide perhaps a little pamphlet or something to those victims, so that they know that there may be alternatives that would take them out of the cycle of violence that we find in so many families. And let me hasten to add that the crimes of this type in the immigrant community, particularly the Latino community, which I have the greatest connection with, is not any greater than the common community. This isn't a cultural thing, this is, I think, a phenomenon of a number of universal factors as well as societal pressures.
Absolutely. Thank you for, thank you for that.
Thank you, Joe. I was looking around and realized two of the three of our speakers used to be my bosses, so always intimidated with Mr. Shin and Mr. Moss. Someday at the school social work, but I appreciate our work and social work. The bifurcation, and President Klein mentioned it briefly, with the cities and other cities and the acts, have you seen really a focus there, or that's where we can help kind of distinguish and really position?
And I think it's outrageous. I mean, how can somebody, I think, well, the problem is that the new normal, we have become completely desensitized as to exaggeration, lies, extraordinary things that perhaps belong in reality TV that don't belong in the governing of the greatest nation on earth. And so you become desensitized, oh, a bunch of vipers, nothing. You hear nothing in return. Even the very eloquent mayor of Boston didn't necessarily go in the direction of saying, by the way, timeout, the reason that they are citing for persecuting some of our community is because these people are real criminals, and that is not true. We have not seen that in Boston, and it is just patently untrue. And I would encourage the leaders of the community, of the immigrant groups who are present here today, to advance that argument as well and defend the law-abiding members of our community that have nothing to do with this designation. Those are lies. But in, the answer to your question is, no, I haven't heard much, and I don't think that anybody else here has either.
Well, as you noted, Mr. Moss, there is an overwhelmingly amount of evidence that actually indicates the opposite on the safety side, that the immigrant community, regardless of status, is actually either as likely or less likely to commit crime than any other ordinary citizen. So targeting unfairly and exaggerating examples for a national spectacle as the predicate for enforcement, I think is disingenuous, is what, is what you're getting at, and I couldn't agree with you more. The one thing that is troubling to me as it relates to the designation of sanctuary is the additional focus that ICE has given in some cities simply because the city has designated itself as sanctuary. And I know that we have talked personally and at the last roundtable also talked about the city of Austin, where a federal judge spoke in open court, that there will be increased enforcement because the city, quote-unquote, you know, the city of Austin has quote-unquote designated itself a sanctuary. And that is something that is troubling, to know that there are people and entities that are willing to go out of their way simply because a city is desirable to making the immigrant and refugee community feel welcomed and part of the way of life and culture in that community.
President Klein, and that reminds me also of something I neglected to mention, which is a direct connection to what you said. Early on, in the first community forum, I expressed concern, I wasn't worried about the federal government trying to cut off funds from the city of Columbus. And in fact, in testimony provided by the Department of Justice and the lawsuit in California against San Francisco, or that San Francisco advanced because of such a thing, they admitted that the only funds that they actually had the power to limit were law enforcement funds, so that they would be cutting off their respective noses despite their face. But what I was really concerned about is that the states might react, casing point. This same week, the governor of Texas signed into law a statute that attempts to deputize local law enforcement throughout the state, denying the designation of sanctuary cities, and that ramped up the argument. Because now we have local law enforcement that without probable cause of the commission of a crime can, because of appearance or accent, they notice that the individual has an accent, they will claim that that is sufficient probable cause to stop somebody on the street and ask them as to the immigration status. We don't want that to happen. That, in my opinion, is unconstitutional and has been declared unconstitutional in the two cases during the Obama administration, the Arizona case famously, and also a Texas case. But during the current administration, I can't imagine Attorney General Sessions arguing that local law enforcement should not be deputized.
Well, I did have one question for you, and you answered it on the back end, and that was the constitutionality of race-based classification of stopping people. Just given your background, not only as the legal coalition, the Ohio Hispanic Coalition's legal counsel, but also as a criminal defense lawyer, you know, puts you in the unique perspective, I'm sure familiar with the Fourth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment, of how you can get around any sort of constitutional, potential constitutional violation if you're going to target someone based on their race.
And they won't get around it on a constitutional basis. They'll get around it on the fact that they will claim that the individual arguing the case doesn't have standing if it's a civil case. And that, they might be successful in, because the only one who might have standing is the federal government, the same entity that you would be challenging in the first place.
It's interesting perspective, Mr. Moss. I appreciate you, I appreciate you sharing your testimony with us and providing an overview of what the working group discussed, as well as your own personal opinion and the Ohio Hispanic Coalition's opinion. Out of the working group, city council is considering a couple different policy decisions, one of which is codifying the mayor's executive order. And I have Brian Shin, our Director of Human Resources, lawyer, former general counsel to the Ohio Secretary of State, here to talk about what is in this legislation. We applaud Mayor Ginther and the work that he has done, but with an executive order comes and goes with the mayor. We think that by exploring and codifying the mayor's executive order, it puts in concrete city code exactly where our values are on this issue. So, Mr. Shin.
Thank you, President Klein, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Stenziano. Thank you for the opportunity to talk today about part of our response as a council to the two information forums that we've had earlier this year. It was clear coming out of those meetings that there was a need for us to take additional steps. And so what you tasked me with was looking into codifying portions of Mayor Ginther's February 3, 2017 executive order to make sure that this order carries forward, as you just said, beyond any one mayor, by making it part of our code, our city codes permanently. So based upon conversations with the city attorney's office, we have drafted an ordinance that would prohibit any denial of city services based upon immigration status, solicitation of information about immigration status, use of any city resources for the sole purpose of detecting or apprehending an individual based upon suspected immigration status, and requesting any information about a person's immigration status, or investigating a person's immigration status. Moreover, codifying these portions of the mayor's executive order would create a situation where any city employee found to have violated this could be sub- where any city employee found to have violated this could be subject to discipline, which could include up to removal. So, we have drafted that, again, in consultation with the city attorney, and are prepared to present it to you as council for your consideration. The other step that I was asked to discuss today is...
Let me stop there, just in case there's questions from my colleagues. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, President Klein. So, just want to clarify with that language and some of what I've heard throughout the community. That language in the mayor's order does not have us not follow any laws. I mean, we continue to follow every law, but again, just a reaffirmation of cities' policies and procedures, just to be clear about that.
That's correct, Councilmember Stenziano. In the language, and a copy of it has been passed out, it should be on everyone's seat, we have more in the back, the actual language of the ordinance says that but for a court order or some other law that we are mandated to follow, these are the steps that we are taking. So, yes, to answer your question, we will still comply with all laws that are covering us.
Any other questions or comments? I want to welcome Councilmember Shannon Hardin here. Councilmember, I know you've been very active on this issue, I want to give you an opportunity to chime in, if you wish, or we can proceed with the hearing.
Well, I'll just quickly say to you, Council President, and to my colleagues, and to the committee who has been working on this, thank you. I think, again, this council is working to make sure that we express our support and the type of city that we want to live in. And I think that this ordinance is a good step in that direction, to show that commitment to our diversity and to our community. So, thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Hardin. Councilmember Brown.
So, I have a question about the, some of the language in the order. We, so, no city officer or employee shall request information about or otherwise investigate or assist in the investigation of a person's immigration status unless a warrant exists, a criminal violation was reported, or an arrest was made. So, going back to the driver's license issue that Mr. Moss brought up, I am interested in how we can strengthen that piece of the ordinance, still follow the law, but not put people into a double bind where we're arresting them and therefore reporting potential undocumented status for something that we, for a, breaking a law that we have basically prohibited them from complying with.
Yeah, let me jump in there, because I think it's part of a larger conversation about the Columbus City Code itself, and penalties, and definitions within the Columbus City Code. And I know that, and Mr. Moss actually touched upon this, making sure that penalties match crimes based on the way they're described in the code. And that, separate, but yet related, based on your question to this, is that my office is working with the city attorney's office to do an entire city criminal code evaluation and review, that I think would touch upon exactly that question of making sure, whether, you mentioned the no-ops charge, that, and many other sections of the Columbus City Code, whether they're up to date, whether the penalties match the crime. So, I think there's a larger global conversation as it relates to exactly what a criminal violation under Columbus City Code is, that we will be having with the community and legal experts on the issue.
So, in proposing this legislation, essentially, your view is that changing the offense to, potentially to civil, is a better way to address this than to stipulate in this order or this codification that we will, we would only report something if a violent crime was reported?
No, what I'm saying is that if it is a criminal violation, that can apply to state or city law, and that it's up to where the city is permitted to act. Obviously, we're limited by state statute and the Ohio Constitution in some ways, but where the state is able to act, I'm sorry, where the city is able to act, where we can look to define exactly what criminal violations are within the authority of the Columbus City Code, what those penalties are, whether it is arrestable offense or not, whether it can be downgraded to a civil penalty or not. All those discussions, I think, will take place as a larger conversation we have about the Columbus City Code.
Okay.
Again, not just limited to this context, but the whole city code in general.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's important, because I do think that this is a sort of gaping area in which a lot of law-abiding people can fall into potential deportation proceedings.
The only other thing I would add is, and I have to give the disclaimer, I never practiced criminal law a day in my life, but I have been an attorney for 21 years. My understanding is that many people charged in municipal court are charged both under state law and under the Columbus City Codes. So, what I hear Council President Klein saying is, we're going to reexamine the city code to see what portions of it maybe are not needing to be criminal offenses and can be addressed in the civil context, is what I hear you saying.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what I'm saying, to the extent that the city is permitted to do so under Ohio law.
Right, under home rule and our authority under home rule.
Yes, yeah. As with most things we do, we have to check with the Ohio Constitution and the Ohio Revised Code to make sure that we are permitted to make any decision based on whether it's our home rule authority or not. Any other questions or comments on this issue? The second point, I think, is important as well. So, there were three global conversations that permeated our stakeholder dialogue that is being presented today for a community conversation. The first was the codification of the mayor's executive order. The second was the fact that perhaps some access to city services was limited because folks who may speak a different language other than English did not know that there was a service available, or there wasn't multilingual ability to translate services. This ranged from fire and police all the way down to 311. So, how can you access city services if you're unaware that, one, the service may exist because you don't, English is not your primary language, or, two, that if you are not even able to speak English, like, how can you access those services in a multilingual fashion? So, Mr. Shin.
Thank you, President Klein. We did work with the Mayor Ginther's administration to explore what we have in place, and to make sure that people understand what already exists. And in response, or from that conversation, we developed an information card, and copies of them are available in the back table there. One side talks about contacting the police, both on an emergency basis with a 911 call or a non-emergency basis when a citizen or a resident, I should say, calls 645-4545. The other side also talks about generally accessing the city's 311 services, which is the general information number that any resident can call in to access city services. It's kind of our first step to addressing concerns in a neighborhood, whether it's your trash not being picked up, or a cracked sidewalk, or any of the various services that we have. We developed this information flyer. The example we have is in English, but we do plan to have it translated, at least initially, into Somali and to Spanish, and we are more than happy to work with community organizations to have it translated into other languages that are appropriate and to serve those communities. The flyer explains that when one calls in and is not an English speaker, that they can be connected to a translator, and this is a service that the police department already has available within every division of the police. And it is also available through our 311 service line. So, these services are already available, it's just that there may not be a knowledge in the community about them. So, that's why we developed this, and again, we're going to make sure this is distributed widely and in languages other than English.
Thank you, Mr. Shin. Any questions or comments for Mr. Shin?
I have a kind of a basic... Yeah, you sense my... I had a question. In terms of, so, over the last several months, several cities' mayors, executives of cities have come out and taken a stance as where their city lies. As part of our deciding to codify Mayor Ginther's executive order, where does that kind of lie in the spectrum? How do you sense, feel it's an ought question, this, how does this give our city and our residents more comfort that in this city, we are protecting them?
Sure, sure. I think one of the underlying themes when Mayor Ginther issued his executive order back in February was, a lot of these policies were things that Columbus has already been doing for a long time. And that is consistent with what other welcoming cities across the country are doing. By us enacting these specific prohibitions into the city code, it makes a more enduring statement. Again, not that they're, the executive order also says a powerful statement, but by us codifying them, it makes it legally enforceable on all departments of the city. And that is kind of in the middle around the country, from my understanding and the research I've done and conversations that we've had during the community forums that President Klein talked about. Some cities are going further, and some are doing less, but we're kind of, in my personal opinion, right in the middle of the pack. But it is important to codify these, to make them binding and more permanent.
So, the third piece of the puzzle actually has to do with the social service network that is currently in place to provide for our refugee and immigrant community. That transcends, goes beyond the Latino community, but it touches upon all those who are here in our city, whom we welcome and we treasure. And that's why we have asked Dean Gregoire of the Ohio State University College of Social Work to join us, and we have been talking with Dean Gregoire about a study that can be done in partnership with the city of Columbus, to see exactly where there are gaps in the social service network, not just for the providers, but what the city is doing. And, you know, based on this information, that the study, I'm sure, will provide us, where we can step in and help coordinate transition and shift resources to make sure that families are protected. Because I do think it's so important, and Mr. Moss brought this up, to remember that the children, primarily, I think about the children, the children that are affected, many of whom are United States citizens, when the breadwinner of the family is rounded up and by ICE and shipped back to his or her country, it leaves a family struggling, many of whom are American citizens, and how we can step in and make a difference in their lives, because that is not the way we want to act as a society, and certainly as a city. So, Dean Gregoire.
Thank you, President Klein. Members of council, good morning. It's a pleasure to be down here. I want to introduce a couple of colleagues I brought with me. Behind me are Lisa Durham, our Assistant Dean for Community Engagement. Her job reflects our College of Social Works' commitment to the community in general. And then, two of the five faculty, Dr. Shivari Karandakar and Dr. Ngeri Kagotho, who will work on this project. It's an honor to be working with the city today. This is an important project, and I'm happy to be back down here again. As our proposal indicates, it reflects the changing environment that Mr. Moss spoke about. We could have known six months ago everything there was to know about the services in this community. I don't think we did, but had we, it wouldn't matter, because the dynamic has changed considerably in the community, particularly for vulnerable people. In our proposal, you see that we've assigned five faculty members to this study. That reflects our commitment and the importance, we think, and you'll see that they have considerable experience in working with and studying a vulnerable and immigrant and refugee population. So, we think we're well-suited to be helpful in that regard. What we propose to do is conduct an in-depth assessment of the needs in the new American community, using both qualitative and quantitative, so statistics and interviews, to explore how things are now for people. And we're going to do that in a couple of phases. In the first phase, we're going to look at existing data, databases we have, the 211 database, and see what actually exists there, and then we'll use those data to survey those providers, looking at how things have changed and getting a little deeper. It's one thing to have a listing of what an agency does, but does it really do it now? Does it do it in the language we need it done? Does it do it for the resources people have available? So, we want to understand that. And we'll supplement that further by interviewing, conducting interviews in the community. The other thing that happens in any community, and maybe particularly in vulnerable communities, is informal networks emerge, and they emerge, they could be, they're all the ways that communities choose to create and support themselves. They might be faith-based neighborhood groups, they might be a barber shop or a coffee shop, where people in a given community know, that's who can help me, that's who knows what to do. So, we need to get into the community and study those as well, too. So, we'll be sending faculty and likely students in to snowball in a way, to ask somebody, where do you go for help? Help us meet that person, where do they go? And so, really creating a web of the informal networks, which play a really important role in the community. So, what we'll provide to the council is a study of those services, and also mapping. Sometimes it happens that formal services don't live anymore exactly where they should geographically, based on how a community has emerged. So, we'll share with you maps of both services in need and identify if there are any mismatches with respect to that, and then a community map of assets that exist. And we're going to pull this off by the end of calendar 2017 and provide you those reports. And that's high level. I'm happy to take any questions, or defer really challenging questions to my colleagues.
So, I think you said, right at the end, when I was asking Councilmember Brown a question, when is the study expected to be done?
We think we can pull this off by the end of this calendar year. We'd like to bring you a report late this year.
Great. Any questions or comments from our, my colleagues?
Thank you, Councilmember Hardin. President Klein, and just to be clear, you're going to identify potential funding gaps. I think that was one of the unknown, for me personally, in going through the last several months, is that some of the actions taken out of Washington may have had specific funding ramifications for services provided in our city, and this research will help us identify where those gaps in funding may lie.
Yes, Councilman Hardin, that's correct. And if I were to look through my chair, Lisa Durham would be writing this down right now, but that's a big part of why we want to go out and do the interviews, and to find out what's available to you now, how has funding shifted and caused challenges, and maybe how our community can help meet that.
Very important work. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember.
So, this is great. Thank you for coming here and talking about this with your colleagues. Very excited, and thank you to President Klein for spearheading this. I did want to ask, are you going to be surveying potential lack in legal services as well, and where there are holes in all types of legal services?
Yeah, I think that has to be part of it. I think we would look at that initially, as we find out what agencies provide people, we're also going to find out what they can't provide, where they refer, kind of where the gaps are, and I would imagine legal's going to be a big part of that.
Okay, great. So, our, my office and, in conjunction with my colleagues, we have been working on putting together resources to help provide more legal services for the immigrant and refugee communities. We've done a little bit of landscaping work with many of the folks in this room to understand what exists. So, first and foremost, we would love to talk to you and share some of that, but mostly, we'd love to learn from you on what you find, to help improve the funding we're putting together, just a little glimpse into it. We are focusing in on what appears to be the largest needs in the community. So, one being know your rights. There is a definitely a greater need for immigrants and refugees to understand what their rights are when they're stopped by ICE, stopped by any kind of law enforcement. And then, there are legal services for DACA recipients, help with visas, green card services, UVs, political asylum applications, all of those things that go along with, hopefully, preventing someone to get into undocumented status or to be put into removal proceedings. And then, there are, there's the bucket of actually helping on the removal proceeding side. There is a similar fund started years ago in New York City, and they've zeroed in on some pretty good buckets of need. But the, really, the biggest statistic for me that, like, looms in my head, pushing us towards creating this, is the simple fact that an immigrant is 10 times more likely to earn their right to be in this country if they have legal representation. So, it's hugely important to rounding out all of this... So, it's hugely important to rounding out all of this, the services needed in the community is this legal piece. So, really happy to hear you're working on the total package and would love to stay in close contact on the legal side of it.
I appreciate that, council member. And study the faces behind me, they're probably coming to interview you. It sounds like you're very knowledgeable.
Well, they're nodding a lot, so I like that.
Are they nodding up and down? Good, good. We also have a very close relationship with the College of Law. The College of Social Work and Law have done a number of things in the community and have a few proposals, not specific to this topic, but about how we could work together to support vulnerable people. We have got a few things floating around for funding right now. So, they could be colleagues if we need to call on them as well, too. But we've got a good partnership there. So, thank you.
And I think it's important to reiterate, Dean, that this is not focused on one particular immigrant group. This is a comprehensive look, because I think what you're going to find, if you haven't already assumed already by looking around the room, is all the great work that groups have done. And I have a list of everyone that was a participant in our stakeholder meetings that I'm going to be reading shortly, just as a thank you to them. But I look around the room and see a lot of faces that are out there every day in the trenches, representing their community and their families and their friends, and they deserve a lot of work. And I'm hoping that the College of Social Work can be the glue that helps guide the city in making sure that there are no gaps, that families and children are treated fairly and they get the opportunities that they so rightly deserve. So, I think at this time, we're going to take speakers. Again, blue sheets behind me, if you have yet to sign up and you're interested. We have seven speaker slips. We do ask that you state your name, your organization, any organization that you represent. And we have three minutes that we limit your testimony to, just so we can keep people going and give them the opportunity for the next person to speak. So, we'll sign it. Again, behind me, feel free to give it to Alexis, Alexa there, Alexis there, if you have a speaker slip. So, the first one is, and I apologize in advance if I have trouble reading your handwriting. Is it Andrew Martinez? Welcome to council. I appreciate you coming by.
Thank you for having me. Council President Zach Klein, Elizabeth Brown, Shannon Harding. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name's Andrew Martinez, and I represent the People's Network. I'm the chairman for that nonprofit organization. We were one of the two organizations that helped bring about the February 16th event, Day Without Immigrants here in Columbus, Ohio, where we had over 700 attendees, primarily Hispanic. My question comes from a member of my community, and it was something that was brought to our attention, that in Ohio, HB 179 was introduced by State Rep. Candace Keller, which would essentially do what Texas is doing right now, prevent any city in Ohio from being a sanctuary city and cause the removal of any officers and any officials in office from helping, you know, our communities. My question is, as Ms. Elizabeth Brown previously stated, us as a city, being a high-producing and welcoming city, how can we leverage that to encourage and influence other cities to not follow suit with State Rep. Candace Keller? Because it will destroy our cities. It will create our law enforcement at a local level to act as federal agents.
Well, that's a great question. I can tell you right now that, as council president, that we strongly oppose that piece of, or I strongly oppose that piece of legislation. I can, I don't usually put words in my colleague's mouth, but I'm going to step on a limb and say that the council strongly opposes that piece of legislation. It's not only mean-spirited and ludicrous and likely highly unconstitutional. I also think that it, for the reasons that you stated, Mr. Martinez, strikes at the heart of the safety and economic viability of cities in the United States and in the state of Ohio. We are aware that that sort of attitude is existent, unfortunately, in government. And that's why I think it's incumbent upon cities like Columbus right now to take an aggressive stand like we're doing, to show our stripes and be proud of the immigrant community that is so important to our culture and our society. So, I would encourage you to continue to organize and know that your city has your back and your group's back and others that think that legislation like that is regressive in nature. It is mean-spirited and hurtful to humanity and that we are opposed to it because it actually makes us less safe and hurts our economy and is frankly not the way we want to be treating individuals in our community. Do my colleagues want to add?
I would just add that if something like that were to be passed into law and signed, cities would not just like sit around and talk to one another about how we oppose it. I mean, it's unconstitutional. It is an absolutely ludicrous piece of legislation. So, it is, it's, part of your question was, you know, how do we get other cities engaged in taking a stand? And cities generally view their, sort of their home rule rights in the Ohio Constitution as pretty sacrosanct, and this is an assault on them. So, we would not even be alone in cities in Ohio that would take great offense and a legal issue with something like that passing. So, we hope that cooler heads will prevail in the Ohio Legislature. That is a big hope these days, but hoping cooler heads will prevail and that the governor would not sign something like that that would directly break up families, directly harm cities, people, families all across Ohio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Asafu Suzuki.
Hello. My name is Asafu Suzuki. I'm the Program Director for Asian American Community Services. First, I would like to thank President Klein and the council for hosting this forum and for the continuing efforts that you have made to support the new American community. So, I'm sorry, I do have a question. So, we really, I really appreciate the efforts that the city has made so far and the ongoing efforts to codify Mayor Ginther's executive order, efforts to be inclusive of voices in the community of all of the immigrant community, which is incredibly diverse. And we really appreciate efforts of, you know, creating these information cards to get the information out to all the communities, to know that they are welcome, they are able to reach out to law enforcement, that law enforcement is there to help rather than to persecute. However, I just wanted to know what the city is doing and can maybe do more to, so I see a lot of members of the immigrant community here, but also I know that some of the more grassroots voices maybe are not as represented. We are service providers, some of us are professionals representing communities or trying to bring the voices of the community to this forum. And I would like to know what the city and the council can do more to reach the, really the immigrants, the people in the community, and to let them know that they are, they are citizens of Columbus, they are part of the city of Columbus, rather than, we can make, the legal changes are very important. These go a long way to protect immigrants and new Americans, but I'm not sure that how, to what extent that community members are feeling, or that if you go out into the community and, you know, talk to a community member on the street, an immigrant, new American, would say, "I am a citizen of Columbus." So--
No, I appreciate that, Asafu. I think the answer is multifold. The first is, you know, relying on the networks of people in this room to identify who those individuals and groups of people are. I think that is so important, that we can't do our job as a city without relying on input from our community leaders and our residents. So, the more that you all could guide us, then I think the easier in the long run it can be, so that for city services, city personnel to be able to infiltrate those groups to make sure that they do feel welcome, that they know the services that are available to them, and that they know their city has their back. I know when I became council president, for example, we created a community liaison office. And it's exactly that type of work in our community that is the purpose of that office. So, that if there are groups or individuals that you feel, that you believe feel this way, or need additional counsel from the city, or an introduction to the city, that's what this individual, that's what these individuals do, in conjunction with participatory activities by council members him or herself. Secondarily to that, we have our community liaison officers within the Division of Police that their job, part of their portfolio, is to go out and to mingle and converse and integrate with these groups. So, again, if you can help us guide, and not just you, but everyone in this room, guide us on to where we can meet those people, where they live and in their communities, to know that the city is there to help them, I think that will go a long way to make a difference. And then, of course, if you have any other ideas, or anyone in this room has any other ideas, you can obviously contact any of us, contact my office of how we can do that, because it is, it is an important part of the conversation to make sure that, from a perception standpoint, you know, we can do everything out of City Hall that we're talking about, but if the perception in the community isn't there, then it's, we're really not 100% accomplishing the goals that we want to accomplish.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jabril Mohammed.
Thank you, Council President Klein. Thank you, council members, Elizabeth Brown and Shannon Harding. And thanks, everybody who came in today. First of all, I appreciate the fact that you're codifying the mayor's executive order to support the new American community in Columbus. I also am happy to hear the commissioning of the study by the College of Social Work. I think that will make a great contribution to understanding the needs of the new American community in Columbus. My name is Jabril Mohammed. I am the Director of Somali Can. We provide services to the Somali community and specifically social change services, public policy, basically focused services. For example, we identify issues of concern to the community and respond to those. And I am happy that the council is holding a hearing on public policy. A lot of focus is given to direct services. I think there is need for more focus on the public policy frameworks surrounding new American communities, given that we have a large population of immigrants in Columbus. And so, my comments will focus on the need, that need that I described of focusing on public policy in relation to new Americans. And one way to make that need, you know, heard or understood by council and city leadership is by creating internal channels for immigrants, immigrants' voices to be heard, so that we can identify and address issues of concern to refugees and immigrants. I know the City of Columbus has the New Americans Initiative. It's an effective institution that we really appreciate. But I think cities from Los Angeles to New York have offices for immigrant affairs that are more empowered than that office, that are better funded, that are led by immigrants. Those cities also have offices for specific immigrant groups that have large presence in the cities, Office of Latin Affairs, for example. I would suggest that the creation of such empowered offices would give more voice to immigrant populations in the city. And I think you just, council president, stated that you are looking for ways to engage those communities. I think giving them voice within the formal city channels would be the best way to give a voice to these communities. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that suggestion, and thank you for sharing it. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Jabril. Appreciate it. And you did mention the New Americans Initiative, and I do want to recognize Lupe Velazquez, who's here and does work on behalf of Mayor Ginther in that space. Our next speaker is Hodam Mohammed.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you so much, President, City President Zach Klein and all the city council and everyone else who's here to support Columbus to be a welcoming center or city for everybody. Thank you so much. My name is Hodam Mohammed. I'm a mom of six kids. I'm also the founder and the CEO of Our Helpers. It's a nonprofit organization that closely works with the immigrant community. I'm very happy that I'm here today. I am, sorry, I know I have three minutes, but I just wanted to say a word for not only the city council members, though I know we only have here the city council members as official elected, but I wanted to say that all our elected officials are the doctors of immigrant community and new Americans. They are taking your prescription. So, when you're prescribing a medication for those people, I'm asking you kindly to take the right steps. Because most of the time, it happens that immigrant or new Americans get the wrong prescription because you never met with them, the patient has not been diagnosed personally, maybe you met with the mom or the relatives of the patient. I hope you get my speech. But when we want to prescribe a medication for a patient, normally we meet with the patient, we diagnose, find the problem, and give prescription. If that does not work, come back in again, until we get the right medication for those patients. So, please, I'm asking, that all the elected officials at least try to meet with some of the immigrant people, the really needy people. If you would not be part of those immigrant community, I'm more than happy to volunteer and walk you through. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that most of new Americans need educating them, awareness in the community, and integrating them to the broader community. Now, we are working on, I'm sorry to say it's only for the Somali community, but that's all I know for, as of now, there is Somali television that most of the community watch. It's called Dalmar TV. So, now we're creating a good morning show for the community, where mainly anything that's new in our city, they can easily know about it. Thank you so much.
Ms. Mohammed, I can say, working backwards, if there are city personnel or elected officials that you think would make sense to go on that show, to talk about different programs or positions, you know, let us know, and we'll try to get you lined up with him or her to make sure that we, again, are educating folks about the services that are available so that folks can take advantage of them. As it relates to the prescription, the prescription coverage, I hope that's something that the College of Social Work can look into. I don't know if you have any thoughts based on research that you've done in the past, Dean, but I'd be curious to make sure that you connect with Ms. Mohammed on this issue and others, because it sounds like it's one that could be life-threatening if you're talking about under or over-stripping medication or misdiagnosis.
Well, and I think you used that also as a metaphor for deep listening, and that's what the council has asked us to do, is to come into the community and listen to you in depth. And we're going to do that. And we were just convening briefly, perhaps make recommendations to council members about, beyond our report, how they can listen further, too.
And I would just add, to that point, the beautiful metaphor analogy that you used, that as elected, I don't think we're the only doctors. I think that the services that you're providing shows that you are serving the needs of the community as well. So, like Council President said earlier, we are your partner, and we're all trying to make sure that we are creating a healthy and thriving community.
I'm here to serve, and more than happy to work with you guys.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Our next speaker is Sudharsham Sharma.
Thank you, everyone. English is my second language, so maybe I'll be reading some portion. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, President Jake. My question is slightly geared towards maybe School of Social Work, Dean Tom. So, I'll read, it will not take more than three minutes. I assure you that. I practiced it. So, so, thanks for organizing the New American Forum yesterday. It was very amazing. I think it was very uplifting and encouraging to hear all those stories and data about refugee and immigrants. Thanks to the organizers to bring voices to the larger community. I hope this will help build an environment of trust and mutual-- I hope this will help build an environment of trust and mutually beneficiary projects, programs to the city and the communities. I'd like to bring few things into today's discussion. I can repeat if I'm speaking too fast, which is a part of the culture we do. I'm sure the number represented yesterday's were, you know, still fresh in our mind, that how the refugee and immigrant communities are adding to the local economy and value. However, I think the job number represented yesterday, or the economy, or the contribution represented yesterday may be an underestimate, right? I couldn't add 6,000 people from my community that go for a job. But the more important thing that I want to bring is the recognition and the acknowledgement that city is making towards this new community, which gives aspiration and hope for us to continuously work and to, you know, contribute to the city and become part of the solution. However, there are many howvers. My concerns is about, you know, understanding the problems and the challenges which the community faces is very crucial. In the last four years, with the Bhutanish community that I'm talking about, has brought 650 new homes. And sadly, less than hundreds were brought in the city of Columbus. Why these people are exiting, you know, going out of this city of Columbus and going to other cities? There are some genuine reason why people want to get out of here. So I think in my understanding that I'm working in the community is that education and crime in those neighborhoods where these communities are living. Falling school system in the neighborhood where we leave drug vandalism, neighborhood impacts on the kids are the main concern among the parents who say that I'm leaving city and going to Reynoldsburg, Geena, or the other cities. When we have two such great city schools being recognized nationally as best school, why our other schools are failing, why are at the bottom, and how, as a community member, we can contribute and make those schools better functioning? Because our community says when they are moving anywhere, even when they are kicked out of Bhutan, they say we are going to Nepal to educate our kids. So education is the priority. So out of that staggering, so I'm bringing back to yesterday's conversation, out of that staggering contribution of 1.6 billion economy, $6 billion to local economy, how much are we giving back to these communities? How much are we supporting these communities? Because it is very vital, this community do exist. These smaller community-based organizations play a clear role, in my understanding, and they are the key partners. We acknowledge that. Thank you for that one. And we are proud in helping the community, the city, to better serve the communities. Now, for example, organizations like BNCC, which is the Bhutanish Nepali community of Columbus, provides services and serve more than 500 individuals in single year, and there are just three staff. The list of service can go on and on, what we do on daily basis, I don't want to take your time pointing out those lists. But unfortunately, by this September, we have to close down BNCC, because we don't have funding. We just got one federal grants, and then we are running out of it. So what will happen to our community people, that we represent 20,000 people here strongly? Most importantly, the services that we provide to needy community folks who are in the transition, we have gained so much, now what will happen if we close down our services? For our survival, you know, we have to write competitive grants, and then there are already organizations, of course, bigger organizations do help us, but it is asking a smaller organization, like a two-year-old child to run with a 20-years-old young man. It's just like that. The competition is intense, and we won't survive. So, but my concern importantly is that it's not just about providing services to the community. Community organizations like BNCC goes beyond services. It is about our existence, it is about our representation, it is about our advocacy, and most importantly, it is about our identity. How many times should we, in our life, be stripped away of something that we think it is ours? This is crucial to me, my identity. Many a times, in Bhutan, we were done that, and then we are kicked out of the countries. We were in refugee camps, and then we moved to United States with big hope and aspiration. But within the United States, we have been moving over and over and over. And finally, we found Columbus as a welcoming city, and we are here. I hope the acknowledgement that we are getting here is true, and we are really adding substance to the local economy. I would be very much thankful for this kind of support and the acknowledgement that we are getting and making Bhutanish community, or any other communities like Bhutanish community, as a crucial part of this solving solution. But last thing that I want to say is, we don't want to move away anymore. We are tired of moving. We want to be settled. We want to make Columbus our home. Please support us, hear our voices. Thank you.
Thank you for your passionate testimony. We really appreciate it. I do want to say that, as it relates to your funding, City Council does have a grant process through its emergency human services funding, that I know either maybe Gina, right there in the blue jacket, can, you can connect with her about how that could possibly be possible for the Bhutanese and Nepali community center to receive. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Council President, if you're clear.
Yes, Mr. Harden.
Part of the research that we'll do over the next several months will identify these types of gaps that may be happening in the community.
That's correct, Councilmember Harden. You were very specific about that, and that's, that's important. I'd also note that one of the faculty member, Dr. Maliku, who's not here today, is working in the Bhutanese community, and that was part of what attracted her to Columbus. The diversity here makes it much easier for me to recruit faculty. So I think we have the expertise to address that. And if you haven't done it already, make sure my colleagues behind get a card from you or how to, how to connect. So thank you.
We do have two speakers left. Again, if you want to speak, the blue speaker slip right behind me. The next speaker is Sakri Chep.
Hello.
Oh, hello. How you doing?
So, good morning, Columbus City Council members.
There was a step on the mic.
Okay, okay. Good morning, Columbus City Council members and guest speakers and attendees. I had the opportunity to attend the New American Forum yesterday, and I was so happy to see people just discussing initiatives and how we can come together as a community. So, again, my name is Sakri, and I grew up in the Franklinton Hilltop area here in Columbus. My father was a pastor of Cambodian West Church of the Nazarene, and my mother worked at the Anthony Thomas Yanni Company there on Broad Street. So I graduated from Miami University, and I've been working as a tax auditor for probably almost 14 years. So I've seen firsthand the contributions that refugees and immigrants have made to our community in terms of tax revenue, job creation, and of course, yummy food trucks. And so, let's see. So I'm a Cambodian refugee. My parents, sisters Helen and Mary escaped war-torn Cambodia in the 70s. My five-year-old sister actually died in Cambodia. She contracted a tapeworm, and that's probably contaminated water, you know, things like that. I was actually born in a Thailand refugee camp, and thankfully, my family was able to move to the U.S. in the early 80s. And so, we are very proud U.S. citizens, and we love America. And so, we have, you know, built something out of nothing here in Columbus. And I want to recruit other Cambodians who have escaped war-torn Cambodia, who have escaped starvation, and I want them to act as like mentors, or just, you know, volunteers to kind of help these new Americans that come to Columbus. So I wanted to ask, what's the feasibility of perhaps the collaboration between volunteers, mentors, translators, the Columbus Police Department, other not-for-profit organizations? Perhaps we could have like a workshop or a seminar that teaches, hey, what are your rights? The Columbus Police are your friends, how can we help? What is your culture? What are the cultural differences? What's the law of the land? So that's an idea I had for kind of like education initiatives. And also, the mentors, volunteers, you know, other Cambodians can perhaps, you know, help answer questions, or how to assimilate into the Columbus community. Another thing I wanted to touch base on is housing. So I live in a condo complex, and there's currently pending litigation right now, and it triggered a fair housing investigation. So, oops. So I think there needs to be some oversight on, you know, condo board members, because sometimes you kind of fear, oh, it's, you know, these people are going to move in, and they're going to bring down our property values, they don't take care of the place. So they shouldn't be able to pick and choose which maintenance request gets approved, in hopes that maybe they'll delay and these people will move out. So I think there needs to be some oversight in regards to that.
All right, well, thank you for your advocacy. On the first part, in the educational piece, I'm going to ask my legislative aide Gina Space to give you a card when you leave to connect, to see if we could organize a refugee, New American, immigrant, she's probably going to get her cards. We'll get you a card. To maybe do something in the community where we can have CPD present, and, you know, other, other city services present, and we could try to build an event like that. I like your ingenuity and your creativity on that issue. And as it relates to fair housing, certainly something that is important to make sure that folks are treated fairly and equally under the law. We fund various organizations, the one that comes to mind is the Urban League, to make sure that there is fair housing, they're one of our fair housing advocates on behalf of the city of Columbus. There's others, and even the Legal Aid Society of Columbus is out there doing a lot of work in this space as well. And I'll have Ms. Space outline what those are to you, and that way, you'll, you'll have that information to take back to your friends in the Cambodian community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Angie Plummer.
I'll be brief. It's humbling to speak after Sudarsham and our last speaker, and Hodan, and I know of all the good work that they do in the community. So two themes to the comments that I want to make. The first one is of, I should say, my name is Angie Plummer. I'm Executive Director of CRIS, Community Refugee and Immigration Services. We serve over 1,000 refugees and immigrants every month. And on their behalf, my first theme is to express gratitude to all of you for your leadership. Since the President's executive order came out, it's been a very dark day for refugee resettlement agencies, and most importantly, for the people that we, that we serve. I can personally attest to the anxiety and the fear that that executive order created in the community, anxiety by refugees, that they'd never be reunited with families, and fear from other members of our community that they would be taken from their families. So your leadership is a direct response to all of that, and I can't thank you enough for, for doing that. I think it started with Mayor Ginter's executive order, and so the second theme, I think codifying that into city ordinance is the best expression of welcome that you can present to our community. If we want to send a signal to the domestic violence victim that she can rely on calling the police, that they're there to serve her, we need a strong signal. I know discussing whether to label Columbus as sanctuary city is a complicated discussion, but I think we need a very direct, clear signal to the community that that's where the city stands. I mean, I had the honor with many of my colleagues, many of you here yesterday, to be part of the, the New American Forum, and I want to borrow Council Member Brown's comments about who do we aspire to be? And I think by codifying this in an ordinance, we say who we aspire to be. Thank you.
I also want to recognize Kenny Ramos, who's here, former CPD officer, and I believe you're the Chair of the Ohio Hispanic Coalition now. Mr. Ramos, thank you for the work that you're doing and the service that you provided to the city as a Columbus police officer. Do you want to say any, anything? Sure.
Retired 20 years, and here in July, be 30 years. I was a community liaison officer. It's a great service that the city provides. So please reach out to your precinct officers, they're, they're a great resource, and they have access to a lot more resource. So they're one person that has the city resource behind them. The Ohio Hispanic Coalition, over 25 years here in the city, been friends with Julia and Jose. And I'm very proud to say that my wife's an immigrant, U.S. citizen, for over 15 years and a small business owner here in the city of Columbus. And it's those opportunities that the city provides for us to come in and raise our children, and I have two daughters that are graduates from CCAD and Kent State, and now one in Chicago. And they are the ones that continue to provide the, be proud of who we are as American citizens. My mom came from Puerto Rico, not speaking English, and retired as a Cleveland school teacher, English as a second language. So it's those things that, it's who we want to be. I'm working on my doctorate degree, and that was based on the opportunities the city of Columbus gave me, being able to finish my masters and so on. I worked for the Federal Aviation Administration, because I flew for the city of Columbus flying the helicopters. So I tried to give back to the city by that. And I think the label of sanctuary city is just something to put a target on us, and not really, we should, we should do what all these community services do, is go out there and actually do the work, help the community, and we don't need a label, we just know we're a welcoming city. And, and, and the people know that. That's why they're moving here, that's why they stay here. I was, I'm from Cleveland, and I moved here in 87, haven't moved back, so. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We look forward to the day we call you Dr. Ramos, so I appreciate the work that you're doing. I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to give closing remarks, but I do want to recognize the organizations that have participated in one way or another to get us up to this point. America's Voices, Jewish Family Services, Ohio Hispanic Coalition, Ethiopian-Taiwahato Social Services, Community Refugee and Immigration Services, Council on American and Islamic Relations, Our Lady of Guadalupe Center, the Asian American Community Services, AVANZA, OSU Undocumented Student Alliance, Central Ohio Worker Center, Bhutanese-Nepali, a community of Columbus, Vedic Welfare Society Advocating Opportunity, Martin de Porres Center, Ohio Latino Affairs Commission, Somali Community Association of Ohio, and Center for Somali-American Engagement. That is the work and the people that are out in the trenches every day that got us to this point, where I, I think that the city is, is doing the right thing and standing up and being where we need to be for the, the citizens that we love and we treasure. So we'll start with Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, if you have any closing comments.
Sure, I'll be brief. I want to thank everyone for being here today and for the ongoing engagement to help strengthen our policies as a welcoming city to immigrants and refugees. I particularly want to thank Council President Klein for bringing us together here today, and for putting forth, I think, really, a package of improvements, not, not singly focusing on this or that, but really putting forth a package. I already, I already said in my comments previously just how important I think this is to the future growth of our city. It, it really is putting together welcoming policies and sort, and sort of enshrining our position as a welcoming city will outlive all of us in this room in its benefit to our city. So my gratitude. I, I do want to note that no one should be deported and ripped from their children for rolling through a stop sign. And that is something that we need to consider in what we're codifying here, and in our, in our future policies. And I think that's the, the one thing that continues to be on my mind. I, I accompanied a woman to her check-in with ICE last week, and she has three children who live in this city. She told me about them. Her son is five and loves his two older sisters very much, and they are his world, along with his mother. Her two daughters love school. One of them has decided she wants to be an immigration lawyer. She is in middle school, and she saw, two years ago, her mother get treated terribly by an ICE agent, slapped an ankle bracelet on her, that only with the help of some excellent legal resources in this city, did she have the ability to take it. legal resources in this city did she have the ability to take it off. And I saw when we walked into her ICE check-in, the agent that has her case, who has developed a relationship with her and treats her well, was gone for training. And the agent who had treated her terribly and put her and her family through essentially hell was the person there, and I saw the fear in her eyes. And this woman shouldn't have to be going through this due to a traffic violation, and she sure as heck shouldn't have to know life without her children, nor her children know life without her due to a traffic violation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Harden? Thank you again. I want to echo Councilmember Brown's appreciation to you, Council President, for your leadership and bringing everyone together to have this important conversation. I also want to heap praise on my colleague, Councilmember Brown, for bringing it to our attention that we're not talking about stick figures, we're talking about families. And, you know, some folks have spoken their values. I hope that this is a show of Columbus enacting our values, and I think it is a good step in the right direction. Furthermore, I appreciate the layers of what we're doing today in studying where we as a city can come together to fill in gaps. I know I'm beating a dead horse there, but that was one of the things that I want to be very clear in, that we are providing services, that our immigrant refugee community have the appropriate services that they need, and that where we can, as a community, we can stack hands. Because it won't just be a funding remedy, I don't believe, but I think identifying where those gaps are, we can encourage even greater collaboration. But the funding is important. And so to that end, my ask would be, our funding cycle for the city of Columbus, the mayor's administration start to go through their funding conversations in the fall, early fall. We start to get in that conversation in late fall, October, November. If there could be a check-in with council, even if the final report isn't completed by then, I think that would be helpful for us to be instructive in 2017 budget. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, and thank you, colleagues, for joining me today. I guess my closing remarks, now more than ever, cities like Columbus must unabashedly demonstrate their openness and inclusivity and strong embrace of the immeasurable positive impact that refugees and immigrants add to the social and economic fabric of our community. What I've heard in our stakeholder and community conversations, and I think what's been reiterated today, is that now is not the time to focus on labels, especially when that focus could unnecessarily and unfairly target and harm families and children in our community, as Mr. Ramos has indicated, Mr. Moss. Instead, now is the time to double down on policies that unequivocally show that we stand with our immigrant and refugee friends. And that's why I think in the short term, by codifying the executive order, you know, partnering with the Ohio State to identify funding gaps, and ensuring that there's multilingual access to city services is such an important, great step in the short term to put our money where our mouth is. This immigration, new American, and refugee conversation primarily is a moral and humanitarian issue, but respecting and welcoming cultural diversity is also a safety and economic issue as, again, Mr. Moss has indicated. From a safety perspective, studies show that cities that promote pro-immigrant and welcoming policies are actually safer. Immigrant refugee communities who feel like they're part of the community will participate with law enforcement to make our community safer. Immigrant households in Franklin County, as indicated by today's dispatch article in the forum yesterday on our immigrant community, they earned $3.7 billion in 2014 and $2.8 billion in consumer spending. They're job creators, they're entrepreneurs. This conversation and policy stance is one that I take very, very seriously. And if there's one takeaway we have here, it's that while there are those who are focused on dividing us as a community and as a society based on who we are and where we come from, we, the city of Columbus, are in the business of respecting others and helping all families grow and succeed. We are not, nor we will ever be, in the business of tearing families apart. That's why our wonderful officers within the Columbus Division of Police's primary focus is enforcing the laws of the state of Ohio and the city of Columbus, not enforcing immigration and custom enforcement. We are a community that embraces diversity of people and thought, and that's what makes Columbus great, and I think that's what makes us welcoming. So I appreciate everyone's opportunity to participate in coming down, and that concludes our hearing, and thank you so much.